Me go ahead and open it up.
Okay.
So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to another Onyx Equities Group meeting. This meeting will focus on our actual type of taxes. We have a guest speaker this morning, Eric Wadi with Wadi Tax and Accounting. I know I myself have been using Eric for my lines of businesses for many years. And prior to Eric, I was using his dad, Mr. Wadi as well. So Eric brings a lot of experience to the table for Onyx Equities Group and ensuring that we process and file our actual type of taxes collectively as a group. And he's going to kind of go over that information with us and try to answer any questions folks may have. And without further ado, I will turn it over to Eric. This is being recorded just for disclosure purposes. We have a OEG YouTube. And I know there were some folks who could not make it on the call. So we will post it there. It won't be made a public posting just because of the information. But those that are in Onyx Equities Group will be able to access it at a later date on our YouTube channel. So again, welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming on the call and we'll hop right into it. Mr. Wadi?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. My name is Eric Wadi. This is my daughter, Leilani. We're here to talk to you today about partnership taxation. If she has something that she wants to say, you may hear her chime in here and there. I'm going to share my screen with you and kind of go through this presentation. So let me do that now. Oh, it looks like the participant screen sharing has been disabled. Are you able to?
Yeah, so let me change that for you, Eric. Give me one second. Okay, see if that will allow you, sir.
Okay, yeah, it's like that works. All right. Okay, today we're going to talk about partnership taxation. As you know, we're coming here to the end of the, the beginning and the end of the this tax seasons. So I want to walk you through some of your responsibilities as a being part of Onyx when it comes to taxes. Okay, so first, what is a partnership? A partnership is an unincorporated association with two or more persons who associate for profit motive. There are different types of partnerships. The beginning partnership that was first created from an entity standpoint is a general partnership or GP. GP has one or more general partners who are personally liable for partnership debt. A general partner can be bankrupted by the malpractice judgment brought against the partnership, even if the partner was not personally liable. Then what happened was they came up with a limited partnership to stop the, the malpractice against limited partners. So a limited partnership or LP is comprised of at least one general partner and often has many limited partners. Limited partners may not participate in the management of the limited partnership and their risks of loss are restricted to the equity investments in the LP. Then we have a limited liability partnership. This is similar to a general partnership, except that in, in an LLP, the LLP partner is not liable for any malpractice committed by other LLP partners. And the latest entity type that's been created at the state level is LLC. And an LLC is a state-registered association generally taxed as a partnership if there's more than one member. Unlike limited partners, LLC members may participate in management without risking personal liability. So the LLC has really the best of both worlds when it comes to a partnership by having members participate in management and as well not be liable if there is some malpractice that takes place.
So just really quickly, Eric, just to inform, you know, like the members. So Onyx Equities Group was incorporated in like the state of Maryland, February 2019 as an LLC. So just so the members understand that.
Yep, perfect. Thanks, Mark. So what happens is when you have an LLC, it could be taxed in, in different ways. So as individuals, they, if you're an individual and you're sole proprietor, you're taxed on the Form 1040 through a Schedule C. And there's different tax rates. Current tax rates are 10%, 12%, 22%, 24%, 32%, 35% and 37%. Partnerships, they file a Form 1065. What happens with a partnership is there's no tax that takes place when the partnership files its tax return. All the net income or the net loss will then flow to the individual partners through the Form K1. And the partners will pay the taxes on their, at the individual level for their responsibility as being part of the partnership. Then we have C corporations and they file a Form 1120. Their flat tax rate is 21%. We have S corporations. They file Form 1120S. This is similar to a partnership in which there's no taxation that takes place at the corporate level. All of the taxes are paid by the shareholders of an S corporation and they pay it on their personal returns when it flows to the Form K1. So what we have with the LLCs, an LLC can kind of morph into these different types of taxations. So a single-member LLC, when it starts out, it defaults to Form 1040, a Schedule C. And that's how it's taxed. It's taxed on the individual's personal return as a single-member LLC. When you have a multi-member LLC, the default classification is as a partnership and files a Form 1065 and there's no tax paid at the partnership level, which gets paid at the individual levels. Then an LLC can also make an election to be taxed either as a C corporation or S corporation. So the LLC can morph into any one of these types of taxations based on whatever its decision is. But again, the default for a multi-member LLC is a partnership.
So just again, for folks to understand the call, we are a LLC. So we are following the Form 1065 at, you know, like the partnership. So all of the gains or losses flow through to a actual type of K1 statement to your individual returns. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. Thanks, Mark. Yeah. So here's kind of more in depth of what happens when you have investments and investment income in, on your personal return. So the individual, they have, they can pay short-term capital gains. And this is for any capital gains. This is assets that are sold for investment that are held for less than a year. So if they're held for less than a year, then you're going to pay short-term capital gains. And the rates are 10%, 12%, 22%, 24%, 32%, 35% and 37% based on your income. The long-term capital gains rates, this is where you get more favorable treatment when you hold an investment for a year or longer. And those rates are 0%, 15% and 20%. Again, it's based on whatever your income ends up being. There's individual net investment income tax on this files a Form 8960. And this is for individuals who have, for single or head of household individuals who have their adjusted gross income over $200,000. They're going to pay 3.8% on any investment income that they receive. If you're married filing joint, the income threshold is $250,000 that you would pay this 3% in a net investment income tax. There's also taxes on dividends. You have qualified dividends and these get filed on a Schedule B as a part of your 1040. And those rates are 0%, 15%, 20%. And then you have non-qualified dividends, which again are taxed at the ordinary income tax rates. And this, essentially what happens is when you have stocks or mutual funds that are, that are sold that generate capital gains, that's where you'll be paying these capital gains rates or any other investments, real estate as well, that you could be paying these capital gains rates.
So Eric, just a quick question. Can we go back to that slide? Um, since, since the main focus for Onyx Equities Groups thus far has been private equity investments, we, we have had to hold them typically more than a year because we get into late-stage private equity events. So normally 12 to 24 months, we're kind of holding these. So then can our members expect to pay the individual long-term percentages?
That, yes, that's correct. Yeah, when the, when the liquidation event occurs and the individuals receive their payouts essentially, it should generate a long-term capital gains.
Okay, I just want to stress that to kind of like the members, whoever they go to for their actual type of tax prep work to make certain that you are getting taxed at the right percentages. So try to take advantage of that.
Yeah, and ultimately that's going to show up on your K, on their K1 statement once their, once the tax return is completed and they'll use that K1 to submit to their accountant when they're filing their taxes. And it'll specify, yeah, all right. So what is private equity? Private equity is an investment class that consists of capital that is not listed on a public exchange. It is composed of funds and investors that directly invest in private companies or that engage in buyouts of public companies resulting in the delisting of public equity. There are no tax implications when making a private equity investment. Cost basis calculations will determine a gain or loss for tax purposes when the investment position is changed. So ultimately, what happens is the main, the key thing that we're talking about here for Onyx is when you've made your investment in these private equity investments, there's no tax implications that take place. You're basically just switching asset classes. You're taking cash that you have and you're investing in stock or equity of other. So what is basis? Basis is the cost of property or cash paid for property and the fair market value of other property provided in a transaction. For example, let's say individual contributes $100,000 in cash and assumes a $50,000 loan from a limited partnership for investment. Their basis is $150,000. And that's calculated because of their $100,000 that they paid in cash and because they assumed the loan in the partnership, that also increased their basis by taking on that liability and being responsible for that loan as well. So there's different types of bases. There's outside basis. That's a partner's tax basis in their partnership interest. It is used mainly in the computation of gain or loss from partnership distributions and the sale of partnership interest. Then we have inside basis. And this is a partner's share of the adjusted basis in the assets of the partnership. So a partner's outside basis is not reported on the K1. Each partner is required to maintain a personal record of adjustments to their basis. So their inside basis is tracked as a part of their K1 and from a membership and in terms of being a part of the partnership. But again, the outside basis is not, which is the money that they're contributing and any liabilities taken on by each partner or member in the case of the multi-member LLC.
Okay, so just a, just a question. So are we practicing outside type of basis or are we practicing inside basis?
You always have both.
Okay.
Yeah, you always have both. And so ultimately what happens is the assets that the partnership has. So when, so for instance, the, the stock and equity positions that the partnership has taken on, that Onyx has taken on, these are, you know, essentially assets for, for the partnership. And the, there's a calculation to identify the inside basis. That's the inside basis for, for the, each partner, right? Now that outside basis is the amount of money that they contributed to the partnership. And, and these, these can be different again because there may be liabilities that sometimes some partners may take on as a part of the partnership. So right now, as far as I know, Onyx doesn't have any liabilities in terms of any credit or outstanding. So there's none of that taking place. But that situation certainly could change, you know, as there are capital calls sometimes that take place within partnerships wherein investment, more capital is, is required to do things that the partnership members decide that they want to do. And if the individual member or partner doesn't have the capital or want to contribute to capital at that time, they may get a loan from the partnership for their piece of the capital car.
Right, so just to, you know, like the members on the call, the way Onyx is operating current day, each individual on a per-investment transaction will decide what they individually want to contribute to that said investment. Onyx Equities Group, we do not maintain any outside loans. We do not maintain any other outside debts. Any expenses occurred by Onyx Equities Group, i.e. the payment of actual type of taxes to Mr. Wadi website, any, any expenses as a whole is split equally between each member. But on a per-investment standpoint, each individual decides what they individually wants to invest on that particular investment. And we have undertaking, and this is probably a little bit of the reason why it's been a little bit of a delay in getting out, you know, like the K1s this year. I have enlisted a bookkeeping company called PL Consulting. And that bookkeeping company is taking the spreadsheet that I used to keep everything on and now is trying like to document that in a more formal process. And so, so, so that now will be, that bookkeeping process will now be kind of taken on by P and L. I'll still keep the spreadsheet, but monthly we will sync up with them. So again, that's another additional cost that we as a partnership will equally pay in. I wanted to do that, one, to help Eric when it comes time to prepare our taxes. And then two, because of what has transpired, transpired in recent activity with our former advisor, William Wright, in trying to stick with FINRA actual type of guidelines. We want to make certain we're doing everything, you know, kind of like above board here.
Thanks, Mark. So what happens, so in, in this current environment, as you're saying, in terms of the delay of the K1s, there's been a delay in everything from the tax deadlines due to the pandemic that took place and it's continuing to take place. The IRS has extended the tax deadlines for many of the returns. So the partnership returned the Form 1065. That was still due March 15th, 2021. But we filed an extension automatically to make sure that we're in compliance with the filing due dates. The individual tax return to Form 1040, the IRS has extended that due date to May 17th. Normally that's April 15th, but this year they've extended it to May 17th. And the, the extension, since we filed an extension for the partnership return, its due date now is September 15th, 2021. And if you were to choose to file an extension on your personal return, that due date would be October 15th, 2021. And just from, I know we have individuals.
Eric?
Yes?
Quick question. So if the corporate's tax extension was put in and we're going to be filing later, does that mean that individually we should also file an extension so we'll have access to the K1 at the right time?
Yes, my recommendation definitely be that, yes, we, that you as individuals file an extension on your personal tax returns.
Great, thanks.
Sure. And so ultimately, generally what happens is when you become, you know, a member of partnership, because of the, the deadlines and the due dates and the activity associated with the partnership, a lot of times the extensions will take place automatically and you become on a different annual filing season ultimately. Maryland, because of issues, changes in the tax law that took place this year within Maryland, their due date now is July 15th, 2021. And if you file an extension for Maryland, then it's October 15th as well for individuals. So let's talk about tax preparation. So as Mark was talking about, there's the costs incurred as being part of a partnership and for the individual members. And our fee will range somewhere between 150 to 250 per member each year. And what that includes is the filing of the Form 1065 and related schedules. That what we're doing with that filing to 1065, we're calculating the partnership income and expenses and doing all the different partner allocations. We're ensuring adherence to the Internal Revenue Code and tax law to make sure everything is done ethically and there's no issues. The K1 creation and distribution. So each partner has a capital account and we have to calculate what the capital account is and distribute the K1 to all the partners. We also will provide a tax return review and that's reviewing the 1065 with all of the members and partners upon the completion of the return to discuss any questions that you may have being a part of the partnership. Now, the fee does not include bookkeeping or the outside basis tracking, which again, that's the individual member's responsibility to do as a part of being part of the partnership.
Right, so just everybody, that last part with like the bookkeeping and outside type of basis tracking, that's being done or being handled. Now, we have enlisted, you know, like the services of PL Consulting, who is providing that service to us.
Okay, and that's pretty much what I have for today in terms of the presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so let's open it up. Anybody on the Zoom call that has any questions, now's the time to kind of get all your questions answered by like the expert because your question could be the same question another member has. So please don't be shy and let's get any type of questions out on the board.
Hey, this is Chris again. Eric, just for you, I, I believe that last year when I got the K1, there was some personal information on it that was incorrect. How should I reach out to you to get that corrected?
Sure, you can definitely just send me an email at eric@waddytax.com. That's E R I C at W A D D Y T A X dot com. Or you can give me a call, 410-298-0300.
Everybody, I put Eric's email in the chat. Afia, I know that you have asked a question in the chat about the cost on kind of the bookkeeping. I will have a cost on that. I don't have the exact cost right now. I literally just enlisted PL Consulting maybe about two or three weeks ago. Phil Lerner is the owner of PL Consulting. I met him at a BNI networking meeting and he came highly recommended. So he is doing an assessment for our 2020 bookkeeping needs so that we can get the 2020 bookkeeping over to Eric for the filing of those actual type of K1s. So I will have an answer on that. I don't have it as of this Zoom call. Any other questions? Did everybody kind of understand everything and see what we are doing from a tax and bookkeeping standpoint?
Hey, Mark and hey, Don. Thank you both for this. We appreciate it. Can you go over the timing again? I was answering a call. I just want to know when Scott is also on the call. Scott is my husband and we actually have an appointment with our tax accountant to file next week. So if we, we might need to hold off. It sounds like filing and we should file an extension. So can you go over the timing again?
Sure. So what my recommendation would be is I don't know what the K1 is going to look like when it's completed and what the net tax effect will be to you once it's done. So I would recommend that normally what I do with my customers is we'll meet and complete everything except for the K1 so that you'll have an idea of what your tax liability is going to be. Since you already have the appointment, have your accountant file an extension. And then once the K1 is completed, then that just gets added to the equation to give you your final number on your tax liability.
And, and, and folks, we're not looking at a long, lengthy time to get the K1s out to you. The bookkeeping, per my conversation with Phil, we should be having that this weekend, if not early next week. And then we will immediately get that over to Eric. And then Eric, can you give, I guess, if you could, some time assessment, you know, kind of like a week or two weeks assessment that it would take to produce actual K1s?
Yeah, sure. I would estimate two weeks from, once we get the bookkeeping.
Okay, so Don, as Eric said, I don't think I would cancel my appointment. If I were you, I would go see your tax advisor, kind of complete everything. And like the K1 would just be an additional type of document. And let's kind of be clear, right now on the K1s, we haven't had any liquidation events. So they're really only going to show the shared expenses across the board at this particular point. Now, coming up here shortly, probably within the next six months to a year, we will have some liquidation events. But as of now, since this is going really over the 2020 year, there hasn't been any type of liquidation event. So it's really just going to be shared expenses. So it should do only, it should only decrease hopefully your actual type of tax liability as of now.
Understood. Thank, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have questions? These are very good questions and, you know, hopefully it helps keep everybody on track and fully understand. And I thought it was important that we had this call because I know I've been getting a couple of, of calls about where are like the K1s and just, just wanted to ensure that we were doing this right. I am going to be posting this on YouTube, so you can go back and review this. I'll send out an email to everybody after it's posted online. So you'll be able to go back and see it again. We have about four minutes left in this call. Is there anything else that anybody wants to bring to, to like the forefront? All right, if there's nothing else, I am not going to hold everybody, but I thank everyone for actually coming on the call. We'll have another Onyx Equities Group meeting to go over new investment opportunities and also talk about some of the opportunities we have already gotten into that may be coming up for liquidations. I urge everyone to get onto the Slack channel if you're not already. Wellington posted something on Slack and I did as well about Impossible Foods, which we are in. And Impossible Foods had came out with some fairly good news about going public either via a normal IPO or SPAC coming up here within the next year or so. So that was actually pretty good news. We have Airbnb, which we are in as a group as well. Airbnb is already public. We had a six-month hold period since we were on the private equity side. And I think that six-month hold period comes up around July or August. So that would be a liquidation event that would be fast approaching for us as well. But that would not be on these 2020 tax returns that would be coming up on the next year tax return. So there are some exciting things coming up and we'll have another meeting that kind of focused on, on, on that. But this meeting was specifically focused on taxes. And I thank Eric and Leilani for actually coming onto our call and imparting a lot of good information to us. So folks, have a good Sunday. Stay safe. Stay blessed.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.